Good afternoon again, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, September first, two thousand and twenty-one. It's five P. M. Call a meeting to order, and Ms. Candell, will you give us a roll call, please?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor Pete?
Here.
Council members Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Paduri?
Here.
And Tomlinson?
Here.
Absent from the meeting until six is Mayor Protem Smith.
Thank you. I'll ask for a approval of the agenda. I'll note that I will be asking for a motion to recess uh, the meeting to hear item B after our regular meeting. So this five to six will be focused only on item A. And item A, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as we?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
A second?
May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Council members Emilio?
Aye.
Letty?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one. Mayor Protem Smith absent.
We have two items in closed session today, a public employment city manager performance evaluation, and also, uh, item B is conference with labor negotiators. Uh, city negotiators, myself, council member, uh, Emilio, and Mayor Protemp Re. Smith, employee is city manager. We'll now go out for public comment.
Uh, Mayor, we do have a public in the, uh, closed session meeting. Mr. Chiani, uh, do you wish to provide public comment?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Pete and council members. Um, I just want to express my concern or voice my concern um, that you are apparently in the process of considering more um, input about the city manager's performance in an evaluation, and then, I guess, also negotiating the terms of his agreement. This seems to be after you've already endorsed or maybe approved a four-year contract with the city manager. Uh, I would say that's a cart before the horse. That is approving a four-year contract and now negotiating uh, his uh, agreement and considering evaluating his performance. Um, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish we could say more, but wait for the closed session report out, please. Any other public comment?
I have no other, uh, public comment or public in, in this meeting that I currently see.
Okay. Councilmember Tomlinson, can we hold your uh, comment or question till closed session?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, um, I will hold, I guess my comment is to, uh, request that we provide a little more clarity to what item A we'll be discussing because the title is misleading. Um, if, if that's not appropriate, then over to you.
Okay, thank you. And let's do that with the report out. That's, uh, um, excellent suggestion.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. With that, we'll go into closed session. And so those folks that are not necessary for closed session, see you probably at six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. We'll just, we'll start in just a moment. Uh, okay. Good evening again, uh, to everyone. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's, uh, Wednesday, September first, two thousand and twenty. It's, uh, six P. M. I'll call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk, Ms. Candell, for a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pete?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yeah.
Council members Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Paduri?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present via Zoom webinar, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
A second?
A roll call vote, please. Ms. Candell.
Uh, council members Emilio?
Aye.
Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
Thank you very much. We, um, have a presentation by Cal Lam. I, I see Mr. Cook and Ms. uh, Stedman are with us. Uh, welcome. And you're gonna talk about water, something that's of no importance to anyone here on the peninsula.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll be taking the lead on the presentation. Uh, Chris Cook, Director of Operations for California American Water. Uh, would you like me to share my screen for the presentation? Okay, real quick. You let me know if you see that?
Looks good.
Great. Okay, so I'll be presenting on, uh, water supply and, uh, drought update. So, uh, before I get too into the water supply and drought, um, it's been a while since we presented with, uh, coronavirus restrictions and other things that I thought it would be good just to give a little bit of a background on California American Water as your water provider. Uh, so California American Water statewide, we provide over uh, to over six hundred thousand people water and wastewater services in the Monterey area. Uh, we serve over a hundred thousand people. Our water quality and consumer confidence report or C. C. N. R. show perfect compliance. Our employees are very uh, proud of the clean, safe drinking water delivered. And then throughout the COVID pandemic, we've been really increasing our employee safety protocols, as I'm sure the cities and others have been doing. And we've been continuing our capital improvement projects. This includes, for instance, Lighthouse Avenue. Oh, sorry, Lighthouse Avenue main replacement, um, where, uh, the city is gonna do a road reconstruct there. And there's a lot of interagency, uh, coordination at the staff levels. We're able to go in ahead of time, replace aging mains before the road reconstructs so that we don't have leaks there and have to dig up a brand-new road. So, um, really good coordination. And then finally, the last point is something that I'm, uh, really proud that we do is we have a, a strong inclusion and diversity program. And one of the highlights is over forty percent of spend is with, uh, diverse vendors. So this can be companies where the majority is owned by, um, women or minorities or LGBTQ plus or disabled veterans. So really trying to get that funding, uh, to companies that, you know, can add value, but then also, um, helping them grow. So, uh, just a couple of points there, um, about California American Water. So then going on to more of the core of the presentation, I wanted to first give a brief history of supply on the peninsula. In the eighteen eighties, Crocker came to the peninsula. He was looking to build it up as a tourist destination, and he decided to build the hotel, the Old Del Monte Hotel. And when he went to build that, where the Naval Close Graduate School is now, uh, he couldn't find water right there. So he built a dam on the Carmel River and, uh, used that to supply his hotel. And around the same time, people found water in the seaside basin, uh, and hire supplies. So historically, we've had two major sources with three quarters of the water coming from the Carmel River and one quarter coming from the seaside basin. Uh, but what you see more recently is, in the last decade, we've had a lot of restrictions, um, with orders and, and other items to help the local habitat, the red-legged frog, the steelhead. Um, I'm sure you heard about all of these with, um, uh, with restrictions on that. So just in the last decade, you can see that it's gone down by approximately a third, the ability to pump from the Carmel River. And then similarly with the seaside basin, uh, we have reductions there with an adjudication of the seaside basin and triennial ramp downs to avoid uh, things like saltwater intrusion. Um, so that's gone down by more than half. And then when we get a new water supply, we'll even have seven hundred acre feet replenishment needed for that. So there'd be another uh, cut in half of where we're at now. So our two major water sources have been reduced significantly over the last decade. Um, we have, uh, we have been, you know, bringing on new water supplies. The first two points are the ones I just spoke to. The third one, San City, um, uh, built and owns a desalination plant that we operate. Uh, it's got brackish water with beach intake wells. Um, that's an added water supply. We have a aquifer storage and recovery program where if there's heavy rains, uh, and there's a certain river ladder level with breaching of the lagoon and fresh water flowing out to the ocean, we can ramp up our pumps along the Carmel River and store some of that excess water that's not needed in our system, uh, in the seaside basin for later use during the dry seasons. And then more recently, Pure Water Monterey Recycled Water Project, uh, with M. One W. Water Management District for indirect potable reuse. And, um, uh, and with all these new supplies, though, you know, we have a factor of particularly with aquifer storage and recovery rain. So, you know, we are dependent, um, on rain, uh, for some of these. And, you know, where we're at right now is we, we have a drought for, uh, for California seeing significant reductions in rain. The first six months of the two thousand and twenty-one water year are the fourth driest on record. And so this leads to, um, in July of this year, the governor declaring emergency drought for Monterey County. So we are in emergency drought right now, just based on, you know, the lack of rain that we have, um, related to that. And you can see here on the image on the left, kind of statewide with major reservoirs. Uh, the red line is the historic average, and then the blue, when this screenshot, uh, I took, shows the, you know, the actuals that are there on year-to-date, and they're all, uh, well, the major ones are all well below the historic average. Um, so that's something where, you know, right now with climate change, we, we're seeing multi-year droughts and people have to plan ahead. Uh, so from a statewide level, um, that's a concern. Locally, we have the seaside basin is essentially that reservoir for us, where I was talking about aquifer storage and recovery, trying to store some of that rainfall. A goal for us would be to store enough during a rainy season where we could supply the Monterey Main System for a month off of, off of that, uh, rainfall that was captured. This last water year, we only captured sixty-six acre feet, which is equivalent to a couple of days. And we do have a Lost Padres Dam, but it's a smaller dam, and typically that fills and then gets all used up in the same year. So we do have some water in there right now, but if we don't get additional rain by the end of the year, we wouldn't be letting out any water from there. Um, so with, you know, having to think about drought, supplies, all of that, uh, we do have a water shortage contingency plan that we do in partnership with Water Management District. It's a four-stage plan. Stage one is prohibition on water waste. This is something, uh, that we're always in. We're in it right now. It's, uh, the restrictions that I'm sure you know about, like, uh, limiting outdoor, uh, watering to two days a week. And then stage two, voluntary conservation. Three, stage three, conservation rates, and stage four is water rationing. These different triggers have, have to do with pumping compared with limits or physical storage amounts. And right now, based on our own review, uh, we feel like we can stay in stage one right now. So we're staying where we're at, um, where we've always been. And one of the, one of the reasons why we're, we're feeling okay about that for now, for the immediate, is uh, for this next water year, we have been coordinating with State Water Resources Control Board about the reductions off Carmel Lit River and that they end in a calendar year, uh, when that's right at the, after the first quarter of a water year. So it's kind of a hybrid year, how it can be looked at. And we did, uh, we have been working with State Waters Control Board, sending them letters, and it seems like we're getting to a consensus that we get forty-one ten acre feet for next water year, uh, rather than the thirty-three seventy-six that would be the subsequent years from that. So that's about seven hundred acre feet that in the short term, uh, we'd be able to use because it is a hybrid kind of exception year. Um, but even with these, um, supplies and, and additional items, you can see, you know, compared with two thousand and sixteen seventeen, when we had more Carmel River water, that's the blue at the bottom, more seaside basin water, um, and, and we had a good rainy season, that's the gray water, the A. S. R., you know, you have a full bottle of water. And then during years like this last one, where you have almost no A. S. R., you have reductions in Carmel River, seaside basin, other things, you really reduce down, um, the amount that's available. Um, and uh, particularly when you do not have, uh, rainfall, it's really, you know, a minimal amount that, um, that we have for supply currently. Um, just looking a little bit more long-term, the light blue with the bubbles, that's our current supplies that we have available. The, uh, red line is the Urban Water Management Plan, the two thousand and twenty Urban Water Management Plan. This is uh, state requirement. Every five years, we need to hire, we hire professional engineers, consultants to look at our system, uh, look at demand, tell us what we need to forecast and plan for, and that red line is kind of where they're lining up for it. Um, you can see right now for two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we look good without rain. Two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, there's a gap. We have some A. S. R. bank that we're looking to, um, bridge some of that with. Um, we do feel like this year and, and likely next year, we would be good, but, you know, it depends on, on, uh, on rainfall, and, I mean, it depends on demand, but, you know, short-term, we feel like it would be good. And that Pure Water Monterey Expansion project that you see is the dark blue, we indicate is two thousand and twenty-four. That would, um, help us in terms of meeting that demand in the near term. And, um, it does, though, reduce our current demand by seven hundred acre feet because there's a replenishment that we need to do of the seaside basin that's counted into that. And, you know, if these demand forecasts continue, you can see there's a, um, there is an increase, um, beyond what the supply is, is available. So, um, what are we looking at there? We're looking at multiple fronts. We're trying to bank as much A. S. R. water as we can. So really, uh, really trying to maximize the Carmel River wells that we have, um, so that if we do get rain, we can, um, uh, we can use that to the full extent, capture that to the full extent, building a parallel pipeline, uh, that's needed to continue that A. S. R. program with so much pumping of Pure Water Monterey coming out, so we can send water in two directions. And then, uh, new San City D. Cell wells to really maximize the amount of uh, water that's brackish, a little more fresh, that'll allow us to maximize the permit, uh, for San City. Pure Water Monterey, the project we have right now, we're seeing, we're trying to coordinate with other agencies. If there's some peaking plant demand uh, that we can capture and hold as reserve or use just in the short term to meet that, uh, meet those needs. Uh, and then Pure Water Monterey Expansion Water Purchase Agreement, that is something we're actively working on. We know from a, um, operations side, we need, uh, we need water sooner rather than later, so we're actively coordinating that. Uh, but then even with those, we still feel that the D. Cell is needed as a long-term drought-proof, uh, solution. Um, so then with, uh, this emergency drought with limitations on supply, um, we've been really impressed with how efficient, uh, the community is with conserving. There are resources available. Our local conservation staff can be called, and they have, um, water-wise house calls they can do. We have a rebate program. They even have some free water-efficient fixtures. Um, so there's various resources, and uh, this list here is some recommendations of state, that State Water Resources Control Board gives to all the water providers that has some good points, too, like waiting forty-eight hours after a measurable rain, uh, to, uh, water your, water your landscaping. Uh, so with that, I, I think that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. How, do we have any council member comments or questions? Councilmember Paduri?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cook, for the presentation. Uh, I, uh, it's always enlightening to review water items, and I'm, I'm, uh, not gonna ask any loaded questions in here. Uh, but, uh, the, I was just, uh, wa- wondering the, the water supplies. You presented, uh, quite a few options in there. What is the order of priority when you actually want to supply water? Is it starting with the Carmel River first, or, or is it?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So, um, so, so there had, with order of priority is when, is when we have more supply than demand, and we have had that at times in the past. Right now, we, we really don't have excess, um, supplies in the sense that I can limit one that I use. I, right now, I'm trying to maximize all available supplies. But then also, if I do have, um, certain ones that I can hold back on, it would be, um, uh, it would be storing that aquifer storage and recovery water, banking that in the seaside basin for later use. So I guess to answer your question, which is a good question, um, I, I try and maximize all that I have, but the last one that I would use would probably be the aquifer storage and recovery, so I can try and bank that if possible.
But, thank you.
Uh, question on the demand curve. Of course, demand is a function of, uh, um, the ability of users to set, uh, let's say, set a new meter on vacant property or to increase water use. Does, does that, uh, water demand curve, is that, that's not an unregulated, anyone can have as much water as they want curve, is it? Or is it a, is, is it under current regulations?
Uh, that, that's a great question. So it is, it is looking at, I mean, I looked at a number of factors. It's, it's, you know, climate change, tourism bounce back, entitlements, affordable housing, M. Back, lots of record. Um, and, uh, and, and some government regulations, uh, right, related to conservation. But I believe that, uh, for the, for the cease and desist order, the moratorium, it is assuming that at some point we're gonna get that lifted and that there would be lots of record and other things that would have meters. So, um, it is with that assumption that at some point we will, we will have a lifted, um, uh, moratorium, but, but it is true. We will need a supply before we can do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Clivey?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cook. Um, you mentioned the government, the governor, rather, has declared a drought. And, uh, I'm just wondering, has the water district, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, have they declared a drought? I know they have a kind of a different formula for when they think a drought should be declared.
Uh, they have. So, um, in terms of declaration of drought, I don't know if Catherine Stedman is on, too. She might be able to answer this question better than I can. Um, we do have, uh, similarities and rules of those stages.
Yeah.
And, um, I know that you're right. They do have different declarations that they can use, but I'm not sure in terms of Water Management District if, if they have declared their own or not. Um, I don't know if Catherine Stedman, she might have her hand, can speak. Uh, but that's a good question that I'm not sure on.
I think it's something about it has to be for two years. I think we're, I'm not sure, but, eh, at any rate, the, um,
So we, ma- councilmember Clay, shall we see if, uh, Catherine Stedman can answer that question?
I don't see her on there. Is she there?
Sure, yeah. No, I just.
Sorry, Catherine. Go ahead.
No worries. Yeah. So, I mean, in terms of the, the declaration of drought, that's generally something that comes from the governor. And as Chris said, he has declared drought for Monterey County. What happens locally on the peninsula is, um, advancing into a higher stage of our conservation plan. So, um, the Water Management District and Cal Lam work that plan jointly, and we have not elected to go to a higher stage of conservation at this point, um, because we do think we, you know, we have enough water to kind of get by in the near term. Um, but it's certainly something that we need to watch, you know, on a monthly basis, uh, to see where the demand goes.
Okay. Thank you. I, yeah, I seem to recall that the district doesn't trigger their declaration until there's two consecutive years, but maybe, I was just, I was just curious what that.
There is, in the plan, there's a physical shortage trigger, and that's, I think that's what you're thinking of. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And it's over a certain period, so.
Right. Okay, so, you know, I, I do agree that the A. S. R. program is a phenomenal program. I, I hope that you guys can get as much capacity as possible, including the parallel pipeline and everything you need to do to get the capacity on that. But as you, as you point out, it's certainly weather-dependent. Uh, and following up on that, you mentioned the Pure Water Monterey Expansion has to dedicate, is it seven hundred acre feet per year of their output towards, is that towards replenishing the seaside aquifer, or is that tied in with something else?
Yes, it's replenishing the seaside basin, and right now we have, uh, around fourteen seventy-four, uh, acre feet of seaside native water that we can pump from. But then, you know, with Pure Water Monterey Expansion, that would go down to seven seventy-four. So basically, we'd be reducing the amount we're pumping, um, with that replenishment amount, um, uh, offset of Pure Water Monterey.
How long will that have to go on, Mr. Cook, the, uh, the replenishment?
Uh, twenty-five years.
Okay, that's always. Well, I, uh, I did not know about the Urban Water Management Plan. That's fascinating. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go try to go get a copy of that. Does that deal with both supply and demand?
Uh, yeah.
It does. Okay.
Um, it talks to, yeah, it even talks to Pure Water Monterey Project. It, it talks about that side of it, too, and some of our newer, um, supply.
Well, I, I know the, uh, you know, the C. D. O.'s coming, you know, December thirty-first, and then we all have to go back down to, uh, baseline. I'm glad that you were able to credit some of this carried-forward water into the next year. But what is, what's the public outreach gonna be to get people prepared for the quote-unquote water cliff?
Yeah, so, um, so what I think it is, you know, first of all, we need to, we need to come, my, here, here is my, my view on it, is that um, I'm supportive of Pure Water Monterey Expansion. I think we need to get that water purchase agreement finalized and get that done. But I think also, I mean, I was just on a seaside basin water master board meeting, and you know, what we talked about there is, you know, there needs to be consensus that there is also more water needed. You know, if we're facing things like drought, we can't depend on A. S. R. or other things, we really need to find a way as a community to, you know, get a common voice and, and try and get new supplies. I mean, right now, we're basically relying on conservation. And I, I feel like the community's in, you know, they're beyond the state in water conservation. We're at water poverty, you know, the mayor's and other things that we don't have. So I think it's trying to get us back to the normal conservation levels of the rest of the state, you know, with, you know, with proof supplies.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. Thank you very much. Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, I just, uh, wanted to comment. In another city I lived in, they had, uh, on even numbers side of the street, you got the water two days a week, and the other odd numbers got to go, uh, during the drought. But I do wanna, uh, throw out a positive here. Uh, we had a problem at our personal house in the Cal, I already paid a compliment to the guy, and he was super from Cal Lam. He also provided a lot of, uh, conservative water measure. He spent a lot of time with us, uh, dealing with the leak we had, but I want you to compliment on Cal Lam.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm, I'm the Director of Operations, so I manage the folks who do the day-to-day out in the field, and I can tell you, they take so much pride in what they do, and when they get a compliment from a customer, it means a lot to them. Uh, they're, they're a really, uh, uh, really great group of people.
Mr. Cook, Ms. Stedman, thank you very much for being here with us and presenting good information. It's, it's, uh, sobering and complex, and I'm sure we're all hoping for a wet winter. And I'm sure we're all hoping for a wet winter this year.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move to council and staff announcements. Mr. Laredo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and to the members of the public. The council had a special closed session meeting that began at five P M. There are two items on that agenda. Us, uh, public employment, the city manager's performance evaluation, and also conference with labor negotiators concerning the employee city manager Ben Harvey. Before going into closed session, the it was confirmed with the agenda that the second item, the a conference with labor negotiations would be recessed to trail the regular session agenda. So at the five P M. Session only focused on the first item, the city manager's performance evaluation. The the topic, the more specific topic of that discussion was the next performance evaluation that will be given the city manager for his prospective employ uh, performance. The council did discuss process and format, discussed the timeline for which this would apply. It talked about the metrics that would be used for the that process and also that's the next steps that would in fact be taken. The council was not able to complete its discussion on this topic. There was a motion by a council member McAdams, second by council member Tomlinson to continue the discussion on that performance evaluation process to September fifteenth at five P M. Councilmember Smith was absent, but the remainder remaining council members voted six to zero to continued the matter to September fifteenth. And then the council also confirmed that item B was going to be recessed and will be addressed following the adjournment of the regular meeting tonight. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harvey, do we have any staff announcements for tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have two. One is we have changed the cadence of the delivery of what was formerly known as the weekly summary. This is a report issued by my office. It comprises of activities, achievements, announcements, and information from the city that we want the community to be aware of. We're now calling this report the city manager's report. And it is going to be released on the weeks that there is a city council meeting. So this week, on Friday, we will release the report. That's my first announcement. The second announcement I'd like to make is that I'm proud and pleased to tell you that Allison Hunter has accepted my offer to become the city's next community development director. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that. We're very fortunate to have Allison in our employ. And I know that you will continue to see great work from her. So thank you.
Well, congratulations, Director Hunter. We'll now go to council member announcements, council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Miss Hunter. That's very exciting. A couple of announcements, Light Speed Testing is offering free rapid testing every Monday at Central Avenue Pharmacy in the back parking lot. And that's every Monday from nine thirty A M. to eleven thirty A M. And you can register online at L S T G dot U S. That's L S like Sam, T like Tom, G like goat dot U S. And my second announcement, I I just wanted to to speak to what happened at Pacific Grove High School. You know, in today's society, we're very fortunate. We have a lot of groups, we have a lot of leaders and community members who work diligently to continue this momentum for equality by disbanding systemic racism, discrimination, and hate. And it really takes a lot of courage, tenacity, and truth to see something, say something. For me, I am angry and sad, especially being the parent of a student at Pacific Grove High School of the recent blatant racist behavior that we saw by another student. So I would like to thank the young lady who took action. And she, you know, followed that see something, say something, which is a thing that is all around campus, as well as reaffirm my zero tolerance to hate and racism. My door is always open as a policymaker of the city, and I I am an ally. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that we're having a memorial service at Lover's Point for the thirteen fallen troops of Afghanistan. It will be Friday, September seventeenth. And it'll be Lover's Point. We have Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce that is going to be helping coordinate in the logistic end of it. I felt like something needs to be done. So I was able to, also the D L I, they're going to have a speaker there, including the chaplain. And everybody's invited. There'll be a future media blitz on this also. And we just have to honor those thirteen fallen troops in Afghanistan. That's all.
Thank you. Without any further comments, then we'll move on to general public comment. Ms. Candell, do we have any general public comment?
We do, sir. Peter Mountier, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening and thank you, Peter Mountier, Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to briefly invite you all to our event honoring four dedicated city employees on September fourteenth. At five, from five to six thirty at the Monarch Pub, we're going to be presenting certificates to Ava Rasool, Lori Frady from Finance, Kent Speed from Public Works, and John Keel from Planning and Fourleaf. These four individuals help power your city. Sergeant Rasool is well known and loved throughout our community. On Lori, she can always be counted on to work with us quickly and collaboratively collaboratively whenever we need to call upon her. Kent Speed's impact can be seen on our beautiful coastline down at Perkins Park every day, and his work has been phenomenal. And John Keel has always been a reliable and customer friendly provider of service to our community. So we're excited to honor them. The event is limited to chamber members, current and former city staff, city officials, members of B C Cs, city B C Cs, volunteers, and folks from Fourleaf. And it's on September fourteenth, five to six thirty at the Monarch Pub. More information is on our website, and you can always give us a call. And we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmelita Garcia, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. And I want to first of all, thank all of you for your service. I want to remind everyone, because there won't be a meeting, that September eleventh is around the corner and it marks the twentieth year of the tragedy that occurred for all of America. And also Jerry Lo Sabado, who's a very beloved individual with all the work that she's done all over regarding the Chinese village and the history of it, has taken ill. She had surgery, and I share this because she was very public about it on Facebook. There was a tumor discovered in her brain. She had surgery. And she has opted not to forego any type of treatment. So she is at home, spending her time with her family and sharing the memories of the history of the family and what have you. She does respond, her family does respond to Facebook comments. And if you would like her mailing address, you can contact me via my email. I'm sure you all have it, and I'm happy to share that with you. So as we all go forward, you know, tonight and tomorrow and all the rest of the days that we keep Jerry and all those that we lost during nine eleven and the thirteen we recently lost in our in our memories, our hearts, our thoughts, and our prayers. So thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing.
I see no other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. I suggest pull item nine A, local emergency actions to be heard immediately following the council agenda. Do we have any council members? Do you have any other consent agenda items to be pulled? Councilmember McAdams.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven A, ordinance enabling promissory payment related to entitlement water, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
They have the motion to approve the modified consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the modified consent agenda.
Councilmember McAdams. All right, Mayor Peak.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Hi.
Councilmembers Emilio.
Hi.
Paletti.
Hi.
McAdams.
Hi.
Pudori.
Hi.
Tomlinson.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. I'll just briefly go over what we've just done. We've approved council minutes from August eighteenth. We've designated Councilmember McAdams as the voting delegate to attend the upcoming League of California Cities Annual Conference. We've supported resolutions offered for consideration by the League of California Cities at the conference and directed our delegate, now Councilmember McAdams, in favor of the resolution. And we've received minutes from the Economic Development Commission meeting from July of this year and Planning Commission meeting minutes from May thirteenth and July eighth. And we'll now hear the local nine A, local emergency actions, and then let's see, where the item seven A that was pulled? Let's let's hear that as eleven C, since that is a ordinance. Okay. Mr. Harvey. Local emergency actions, floor is yours. Welcome again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the time during your meeting when we discuss actions we have taken for your ratification or for information related to the local emergency, the global pandemic. As you know, from the agenda report, we don't have any actions to bring forward to this evening. However, as discussed at your last city council meeting, we have been working on a policy for vaccination testing for city employees. You may have seen, you may have not, because it just went out earlier this afternoon, a draft vaccination and testing policy. We're trying to finalize some components of that in order to roll that out. We do have our human resources director here with us this evening if you have specific questions about that policy. And with that, that would be the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Perhaps before we go out to public comment, I should add that your draft policy, Mr. Harvey, is for vaccinations, mandatory vaccinations or weekly testing for all staff and and includes city council as well when we return. Thank you for that. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to thank Director Libian and City Manager for getting that draft policy together so quickly. And also, you know, I was pleased to see that the city is going to be taking advantage of an excellent resource, which is the COVID Collaborative, which is a partnership between the county and the Community Foundation of Monterey County. They're really doing some excellent work, and so they will be providing free rapid tests for the employees that will be self-ministered, and and they have lots of other resources as well. I do have one question, though, with regards to the additional monies that we, the city of Pacific Grove received from the American Rescue Plan Act. Have we received the first sort of portion of the additional money? And are are we going to reach out to the community on input, or when will that be coming back to council for reveal? Thank you.
Through through the mayor, I could address Councilmember McAdams' question. Yes, Councilmember McAdams, we will be bringing a budget amendment item to address the delta in additional ARPA funding. I believe we have it scheduled for the next city council meeting. There is a small chance it might be delayed to the one after that, but our goal is the next city council meeting. Staff will make some recommendations for how you might program that funding, but ultimately, of course, it is the council's decision.
Thank you. And then just to follow up with that, you know, a lot of other cities are having, you know, some sort of vehicle for the community to provide input. Are are we doing that as well?
Through the mayor, the the meeting itself will be the vehicle for public input. We have a number of community capital improvement projects, pardon me, that the council was unable to realize due to the limitations. And so we really started with that as our first recommendation for the council, going back to items that we felt the council might want to consider approving now that this money has been realized. But again, certainly council can can override, of course, staff's recommendations on that and offer any suggestions that they might have too, of course.
Great, thank you. And thank you again for your prompt work on the the vaccination and testing program.
Councilmember Pudori.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank the staff for coming up with this policy. I I haven't had a chance to look at the the draft proposal, but the headline says draft mandatory vaccination. Does that mean that the staff is going, are we going to mandate the staff to get vaccines? Or is there something else that I need to know here?
Through through the mayor, Councilmember Pudori, we have a very high vaccination rate. It's somewhere between eighty five and ninety percent. And we expect that it will likely climb even higher. We are taking an approach of mandatory testing for those who don't get vaccinated, with, of course, the understanding that some people who are not vaccinated do have a medical reason for that or possibly a religious reason for that. But we have a very small number, and so at this time, we're recommending as part of this policy, just a requirement for mandatory testing if you're not vaccinated.
And can I then ask whether And, and can I then ask whether we can change this policy to make it mandatory to get a vaccination unless there is a a health kind of issue for the individual? Can we, can we further draft this policy to accommodate that?
Certainly, staff takes direction from the city council. We would, if council wanted to pursue that, we would probably recommend putting that item on the agenda for a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add my full support and thanks to the city manager and our HR director for this, for the mandatory vaccination and testing policy. It's the right thing to do. I also thank and fully support the recent action by our District Five Supervisor Mary Adams and the entire Monterey County Board of Supervisors for endorsing a public, a mandate on mask wearing in public. I know wearing a mask is not fun, it's uncomfortable, or even unpleasant. But it's a simple act that we can do to help prevent the, the spread. I understand that our COVID, the county COVID infection rate is, it's, it climbed, but it's flat right now. And so that's why the board decided to take an action. And I personally think it's the, the right action. We'll hear more about that when the the County Board of Supervisors meet next week and it will, they expect it will apply to Pacific Grove and all cities in the, in the county. And I have one other question for Mr. Harvey. Do we have any employees out right now because of COVID, either due to being, having COVID themselves or being exposed?
Mr. Mayor, we, we might have potentially one or two employees in an abundance of caution just for potential exposure. I'm not aware of any that actually have it or, or really are known to be closely, if, if that's a term, closely exposed. It's more cautionary. We do have a couple of people that are staying away from the office for a few days and testing just to make certain that they didn't pose any risk to everybody else.
That sounds good. I, I was also, at some point, I hope we are going to be meeting in person. By we, I mean council and all the boards, commissions and committees. Maybe it's premature to do that, but I think I'm hoping that we have a conversation. Start that conversation at our next meeting. Mr. Harvey, if you could be prepared. And councilmembers, prepared to bring your thoughts and we can talk about it during this agenda item. Just how soon and what preparations we need to meet again in person. Councilmember Kaduri, you still have your hand up? Was that? Okay, all right. Seeing no other hands up on this item, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, eleven A, dissolution of the Golf Links Advisory Committee. Mr. Harvey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an item without a presentation. It's a very short item. This is really follow-up from a recommendation from your Golf Links Advisory Committee back in May wherein they voted amongst themselves to dissolve. That is their recommendation. The feeling was that the Golf Links Advisory Committee no longer really serves much of a purpose. Primarily as a conduit for communication between Courseco, the city's golf operator, and the golf clubs and the city. The feeling from the Golf Links Advisory Committee was that communication does take place on a regular basis. It is not necessary to convene a advisory board meeting in order for it to happen. And with that in mind, their recommendation to you is to dissolve the committee. You will need to do that by ordinance if you agree with that recommendation. I'm happy to field any questions. Mr. Dan Go, who is our liaison to the GLAC is here as well. And thank you very much.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion. Mayor Protempore Smith.
We have approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Council discussion on the motion. I'd just like to add that I listened to a couple of the Golf Links Advisory Commissioners and at their meeting. And it was also suggested that items concerning the golf course could also be brought to the recreation board as well as directly to city staff or to Courseco. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just real quickly say thank you to all the people that have served on this advisory and committee in the past. And thank you to the city and the staff for getting Courseco in place and you know, the, the evolution that has happened to get to a point where we don't need this body is, I think, a good thing. That means the golf course is in a good place. And so thank you for everybody's past work and the years that have, have led to this point.
I, I endorse everything councilmember Tomlinson just said. Okay, Ms. Kendall, may we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Smith. Councilmember Emilio.
Hi.
Councilmembers Coletti.
Hi.
McAdams.
Hi.
Kaduri.
Hi.
Tomlinson.
Hi.
Mayor Peak.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now, next item is eleven B, special meetings in closed sessions. That's my agenda item, Ms. Kendall. Could you put up my slides, please? I just have a couple of slides.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could we go to the next slide? Thank you. So council feedback on this particular discussion item was received on August fourth. And actually, most of the things, the recommendations and, and suggestions by council are are already standard practice, though there are some gaps in our regulations. And so this work will help institutionalize those recommendations. Now fill in, fill in the gaps and, and as I said, put it in formal language, our, what is already our standard practice. And that can be found in Council Policy seventeen and in the municipal code two point oh four oh five oh. Next, please. So Policy seventeen amendments, I've paraphrased them. There, the first one is hearing closed session items prior to a regular meeting beginning at five PM. That's exactly what we did tonight. And the next amendment is that agenda reports will include title, recommendation, background, justification and financial impact. And that has been standard practice. It's amazing. It was just never formally written down. And so that's just a standard agenda report for our open sessions. But we add on that the recommendation was to have closed session agenda reports of a similar nature. And of course, those closed session agenda reports shall be confidential. That's knock the report out. That's a different, that's a different subject. Right, next, please. And turning to the municipal code two point oh four oh five oh. The First Amendment would be notification of special council meetings like regular meetings seventy-two hours before they occur. Again, this is exactly what is, is our standard practice today. The second one is minutes shall be prepared for all council meetings. That's both regular meetings, open session and closed sessions. And you can see where the meeting took place, who was present, type of meeting, what was considered and any action taken and the vote. And for, for our special meetings, closed sessions, that happens at the announcement part of our open meetings. And that's what we're currently doing. So this is, this language just formalizes it. And reportable actions taken by the council and closed actions shall be reported when council next convenes in open session. Again, that's, that's what you just heard today. Just a few minutes ago orally from Mr. Laredo. But will also be reported in the minutes when we receive them on September fifteenth. Next. And that concludes my presentation. Do we have any public comment?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I, it's, you distilled down a lot of feedback into some pretty clear language, which was is great. So thank you for that. And I think it captured our conversation really well. And it is a lot of our practice. So the only question I have is maybe to the city attorney that sometimes my understanding is that a special meeting, if, I don't know, we, we had to convene in an emergency type manner really quickly within twenty-four hours. You know, that without an agenda or without posting it, we are able to do that in those circumstances. So does having a sentence in the code that said we shall post seventy-two hours in advance for all special meetings somehow preclude us from then having that option? Does it muddy the waters or are we still able to have the, the last minute meeting for the ca- in case of an emergency?
I do believe that the way the draft ordinance is written, you do not have the ability to do this on less than seventy-two hours notice. You'll compare item E that says when practicable or when practical closed session items are best addressed during a special meeting. But you don't have under F similar language. So F basically says that the agenda reports for closed sessions need to be seventy-two hours in advance. And there's no reference to the exceptions.
Okay. So my suggestion is to mess with the language so that we don't box ourselves out of that option. Knowing that majority of the time we are going to be able to post seventy-two hours prior, but I don't want to you know, take that option away from us. And then my second comment is do we need to have any language that talks about how, you know, we're going to have one item at that five to six o'clock time. And if we have a second item, we'll, we will talk about it after the open session like we're doing tonight. Does that type of practice warrant a sentence in the code is open for discussion with you all? Otherwise, I like all the language.
I want, I want to, before I recognize another council member, I want to clear, clear up the language. So the, the Brown Act, and I'll let Mr. Laredo go into detail on this. The Brown Act defines an emergency meeting and it defines, and I was trying to pull up the actual definition of what constitutes an emergency in local government. And it, as you described, it says we do not need to post an agenda. We can just call the meeting immediately to address that emergency. So I just want to be very careful about using the word emergency. Because we already have the ability to call a meeting without any notice yet to address an emergency as defined in the, in the state statutes. Mr. Laredo, could you help us? What, what is the definition of an emergency?
Well, an emergency, under the Brown Act, an emergency is a circumstance that has arisen since the posting of the agenda. And there is a need for immediate action. It requires a supermajority vote in order to go in closed session. My concern is that the proposed ordinance does not create that exception for an emergency meeting. And while you would be compliant with the Brown Act to have an emergency meeting, your ordinance doesn't allow for that as worded. And my concern is that action that might be taken in that emergency closed session while compliant with the Brown Act could be deemed to be invalid under your ordinance unless you create an exception for an emergency meeting.
I thank, thank you for that. Okay. So I'd like to see we get in alignment with the state on the word emergency. And sorry to hijack that for a second.
So, so we, is it okay, Mayor, if we add a, a letter, whatever the next letter is, where we, where we reference the state's intent there with the emergency meetings so that our policy is in parity with that? That that would be what I recommend.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coletti.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just looking up. So the section of the government code is fifty-four ninety-five six dot five B. I think it would be, a special meeting is not an emergency meeting and vice versa. Or actually, let me restate that. A special meeting doesn't necessarily mean it's an emergency meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Laredo?
That's correct. So it, it, as I understand the discussion, the concept would be only to ha- allow discussion of urgent matters that are defined as such under the Brown Act.
Okay. I think what the ordinance is attempting to do is have special meetings noticed with the same requirement as regular meetings, which is the seventy-two hours. And I'm all for that. It's a bit of a workaround. So I think we need this additional workaround to say that does not apply to emergency meetings. Is that everyone? Okay. So I'm all for that and I would suggest that well, I'll just leave it at that. We'll let the mayor make the next call.
Councilmember McAdams.
Mayor for your very succinct agenda report. And thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for, for bringing that up. I just have one more edit in section four. It says, and I think this is just a template error that we tend to always somehow use. It says in accord article fifteen. And so I, I believe that's supposed to be in accordance with article fifteen of the city charter. So I just think it's missing some words. I, I think that this is wonderful to get codified. It will be great for future councils. And I appreciate the dialogue that we all had to, to bring this to fruition.
Councilmember Coletti.
Sorry, Mayor. Councilmember McAdams jogged my memory. There's also an edit I caught regarding the enacting clause. And I think that's because you may have been using an old template for the ordinance, but the enacting clause of the ordinance should be aligned with the charter. Thank you.
All right. All right, um. Well, if this does pass, I'll go ahead in the second read. I'll clean up, clean up the uh, language on uh, sections, I think it's four and five. Council member Padori.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I had a quick question, uh. Uh, the emergency matters as defined and. The municipal code says that it will be determined by a majority of the council. Um, if we were to go with the Brown Act as an emergency item. I believe Brown Act says five, um, or one-third of the council. So I, I just wanted to. Uh, inquire from the city attorney whether that is a change that we're proposing here or not.
My understanding of, of the discussion is to align the addition of urgent matters. To the Brown Act, which would require a five-sevens vote.
And so that, that, just to clarify, so, so for everybody. The, the change that you're proposing for an emergency is uh, a switch from a four. Member majority to a five-member majority for emergency?
No, no, this is not, this is not the calling of a special meeting. This is adding an item after the posting of an agenda. When the matter arose. Following the agenda and for which uh, urgent action is needed. That's the item for which there would be fi- a requirement of five votes, which is consistent with the Brown Act, and it is consistent with your prior practice.
And, um, so just to reclarify, uh, if the council wanted an emergency meeting. How many members would, would be required?
Well, th- there is no such thing as an urgent meeting. There, there is a, uh. There's a special meeting, and at the moment is, does, it does require four votes of council, and that would not be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protempere Smith.
So I, I have some issues with this. Um. I, first of all, uh, seventy-two hours, I mean, having the same requirement kind of. To me, doesn't make any sense. Uh, that's the requirement for regular meetings. Not the requirement for special meetings, and there's a reason that we have these. Uh, lesser requirements. It's for handling issues that uh, might arise on a shorter term basis. So I definitely have an issue with that. Uh, let's see, what else? So the, these, the items in closed session are, are confidential. So I, I feel like creating records. Uh, voluminous records or, or pretty, uh, records with a lot of information is, is dangerous. The other thing I saw here is there's a, I don't think special meetings need to have one agenda item. I think you can get more than one thing done. And I also, we've never had. We've never had, uh. Agenda reports. For these closed sessions, so. That is another thing, but I'm not sure. After five years is needed, but, I mean, it sounds, it seems like that's where we're headed, but I, I don't know.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, would like to make a motion.
Please.
I move we approve a resolution amending council policy oh 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 dash one seven. And introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to amend Pacific Grove Municipal Code. Section two dot oh four dot oh five oh. And direct publication of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney to include the. Um. The three edits. One by Council member Tomlinson. With regards to referencing the Brown Act. The second, uh, from Council member Coletti regarding section five, and then my edit. Uh, regarding the missed language in section four.
I'll second.
Did I get all the edits?
Think so.
Okay.
Discussion on, on motion, Council member Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and, and even though your agenda report has a couple of key points. Specifically pointing to, you know, a minimum of one item. Being discussed, um, that's, that actually didn't make it into the resolution or the ordinance. Um, and, and so that, that's just the best practice that we discussed and, and we're kind of. You know, rehitting on tonight, at least that's my understanding. Um, so we could put two items on if, if we so wished. Um, is it, and then, um, I, I also was gonna say that. You know, the, the agenda reports are meant to be, uh, ke- kept confidential and minimal, um. And I believe that they will. I also think that the seventy-two hours prior noticing of these. Uh, meetings have been happening for years and years, so, um, it, it shouldn't be a, a tall order to. To notice them at seventy-two hours prior unless they're in the case of some sort of emergency mask. Covid thing, you know, that we're dealing with, which we're, we're gonna, um. Add into it. So those are just my comments based on some of my other colleagues' concerns. So I support this and I'm, I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Council member Emilio.
Yes, I know I'm kind of a beaten dead horse here, but. Um, back to the twenty-four hour notice, um. I do know, um, now this dealt with the school board I worked with. Uh, we did have an emergency meeting. And we were allowed to put out a, and we had an attorney also, but. We were allowed to put out a twenty-four hour notice to the public. Uh, Mr. Laredo, do you, um. Have you heard of that? I just need clarity on it. Seems like it's been going around.
The Brown Act discusses both special meetings and. Uh, emergency meetings. Emergency meetings are very, very limited. That's when there is a imminent threat to public facilities. Uh, the Brown Act would allow that. I believe that what you have before you is silent as to those emergency meetings, and I would therefore construe. Uh, the ability to hold an emergency meeting still, uh, to be unconstrained by your ordinance or your policy. But that's, those are very, very limited. Now, I've been city attorney for sixteen years. I've never seen. The need for a, uh, uh, an emergency meeting. Uh. Different when there is a special meeting. This does require the seventy-two hours notice for a special meeting. Different with respect to adding an item to an existing agenda. Either to the regular a- agenda or to a special agenda. The proposed change would allow those items to be added, but with a super majority vote, and again. Only for those matters that arose after the posting of the agenda and for which action is needed. Okay.
Ms. Candell, may we have a vote, please?
Uh, yes, sir. I wanted to confirm we have a, a motion by Councilmember McAdams and seconded by Councilmember Coletti.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Mayor Protemp Smith?
Oh.
Councilmember Emilio?
Hi.
Councilmember Coletti?
Hi.
Councilmember McAdams?
Hi.
Councilmember Padori?
Hi.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Hi.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you very much. We'll now go on to the former item seven. A ordinance and that enabling promissory payment related to entitlement water. Mr. Harvey.
Uh, yes, Mayor, this item was, oh, sorry, I forgot this actually has my name on it. Um, this item was pulled from the consent calendar. This is the second read of an ordinance, um, allowing. Uh, for the sale of promissory, uh, water for, uh, large. Uh, developments over a certain, um, amount of acre feet purchase of entitlement water. This has come forward, uh, from your prior meeting. Uh, myself, the city attorney. Uh, community development director are here to respond to any questions. We do not have a presentation for this item as it was on consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion, Council member McAdams, I believe you pulled this item.
I did, thank you, and I, I, I wanted to thank my colleagues. Uh, for all of the robust conversation that we've had regarding this item. I just have a couple of questions for our city attorney. Um. Being that. I, I'm confused about the difference of this promissory note and promissory agreement. So in section one. In the facts, all of the facts, um. Speak to a promissory note. And then, when you go into the ordinance part, i- it starts speaking. Into a, a promissory agreement. So under section two. We have this change from promissory note to promissory agreement. So what is the purpose of that inconsistency?
I was concerned that the term promissory note. Could be limiting, uh, and. That the term promissory agreement would be more, a broader, more generic, more all encompassing. So what I wanted to make sure is that the limitations that we have here, and these are limitations saying that. The, the. That this promissory agreement has to be paid in full. Before, uh, you can actually occupy. That, uh, that the water entitlement is subject to revocation until it's paid in full. I wanted it to be as broad a, uh, and, and, and. And broad i- in, in its implementation as was possible. So there are multiple ways that someone can have a promissory note. It could be a mortgage. It could be an indenture. It could be. Other types of payment. And I wanted to make it more generic to make sure that whatever that promissory agreement was. That it would be subject to these limitations so that. You could not argue that they would have a right to use the entitlement water, that they would have a right to occupy. Even though it was not paid in full. And that was my rationale for. Uh, backing it off and saying it's an agreement, not a note. I think a note is much more specific. Yes, you could replace the word agreement with the word note. But my fear is that in some circumstance in the future. Uh, there might be a circumstance where the note would not be paid, and someone would argue that they could occupy. Someone ar- could argue that the w- water entitlement was not subject to revocation. That was my rationale in making it more generic.
So then, and thank, thank you for that. I'm sorry, I'm still confused. So why then wouldn't the entire? Documents speak to a promissory agreement?
Only because this originally began the discussion of this item as a promissory note. And I, I felt that we should honor that by referencing the promissory note. If you, if you wanted to go through and make a promissory agreement throughout. Then that would be more generic. I do believe there's value in having a promissory note. But I just wanted to make sure that the conditions that we were attaching to protect the city's rights was going to be more generic.
So in this process, we have a document that gets recorded, correct, by the county recorder's office?
Yes, there's an escrow agreement that would call for documents to be recorded, yes.
And so do they recognize a promissory agreement? The same as a promissory note? Or have you confirmed?
The, what will be recorded is based upon the escrow agreement. The escrow ma- agreement should define this as a note. If all things are going in according to, uh, the way we've envisioned it, yes. From my perspective, it's, it's more or less a distinction without a difference, but I was concerned that. Uh, in some future scenario, this, I, I was trying to eliminate loopholes that other people could go through. To argue that the matter was not subject to revocation because it was another form of promise, uh, a promise to pay.
Okay, and so the one promissory note that we have, uh, on record. Uh, with the five-twenty lighthouse, is that the same wording? Or are, would we go back and change the note to match what we're, what we're approving this evening?
No, this is, this ordinance's perspective, this sets the rules going forward. The promissory note that was, uh, issued. Does not have all the same protections that are listed here. And you cannot go back and that, that, that is a contract that was entered into, and we cannot unilaterally change that.
Okay, so we can't go back and, and even. Open that discussion, uh, in good faith?
Well, you could always open a discussion in good faith, and I haven't taken a close look at that. Uh, that document to see what the rights and remedies are under that. So I'm not, I'm not prepared to, uh, to, to provide an answer there. You're not precluded from reexamining it. But the parties have rights and one party cannot unilaterally change that.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I think I have a better understanding, but if you are comfortable and certain that having. The legal document referenced as a note and also agreement are basically the same things, then I'm, I'm fine.
I, I can assure you, a lot of thought went into that, and I did it with an effort to best protect the city. That was my motive.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then I also, um, would like to thank staff for, um, including the. Um, the workflow document. I did have a question, though. Uh, with regards to the document when it talks about. Uh, the due diligence. What exactly is that? I know that before we were. That staff had mentioned like we're checking with the Secretary of State, but. What exactly are, are we doing? A credit check also? Are we getting references? Um, was there a reason why that part wasn't necessarily? Documented, it just said basically staff would. Would do some checking. It didn't really, so I think I would like to better understand what that is.
Yeah. I- if, if I may. This was intended to show a general flow of, of, of activity, but not to. Uh, not to be so definitive to preclude other steps. Um, the. Staff will continue to refine this and provide more direction, but it. Due diligence depends, it will change if it's a corporation. From a partnership. Uh, there has to be a, a, a credit check. There has to be a making certain that, uh, the. If it's a corporation that's in good standing. That, uh, the corporate, the, the corporate body approves the. The promissory agreement, and they did that as a matter of record in terms of the corporate minutes. Those are the types of activities that go on, under, uh, due, due diligence.
Right, I, I'm speaking to the buyer qualifications. So is that what, they have a business license? I mean, I, I don't know what that means exactly. Um. So I, I think I would want to, um. I think I would want to understand, like, when these come to council. Will they also, you know, will this packet, uh, incorporate? A credit check and a bank statement, or do you see what I'm saying? Like, what, what does that mean as far as the qualifications?
I'll, I'll defer that to your, uh, your city staff as to what it is that they will be looking for and, and what would they would present to you.
If, if I may, i- I think as a city attorney. If I may, I think as the city attorney alluded, it would depend on who is coming forward. Is it an LLC? Is it an individual? Is it a corporation? That would, that would dig, we're not going to be able to run a credit check per se, obviously, on a on a corporation or an LLC. We can inquire with the Secretary of State's office as to whether they're in good standing. You know, we could, we could look at other I'm trying to think of the types of standardized things that you could do. But I think these are going to be one-off and few and far between. You know, I think that you may have one of these come before you in the future. We're going to make sure that we don't bring forward something that is going to be a risk to the city or a waste of your time. And if you have ideas, of course, we'd love to hear those. But I don't know if I have a candid answer as to exactly all the steps we might take.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm just, I was thinking in terms of, you know, if someone came to me and wanted a million dollars, I would want to be really clear, you know, and feel certain that it will be paid back. Because we're basically giving everything upfront minus, you know, 10% and crossing our fingers till the end. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, obviously, they're creditworthy, they're experienced in business, they have millions of dollars backing up their project. And just, you know, obviously, the city is really taking a risk and that we're aware of that.
And if, one more comment, if I may, through the mayor. This ordinance enables the council to issue a promissory note. It doesn't require it. Council retains its discretion to say no. And council retains its discretion to make its own inquiry and to gather further information before it makes a decision. So your decision will be greatly influenced by the facts before you, by the people that are before you, and for the reasons for which they're asking for the promissory note. And that's your due diligence. Just because staff has done this initial screening, that's not the end all be all. You need to decide that this circumstance is warranted.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Laredo.
Councilmember Emilio. Mr. Harvey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just one quick follow-up to Councilmember McAdams' question. You know, one thing Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, that we have done previously is we have also asked a banking institution affiliated with a person interested or a corporation interested in doing business for a creditworthiness letter, you know, a statement of assets, cash on hand, history with the bank, that type of thing. So that, I should have mentioned that, but that is a due diligence type of activity. You know, having a reputable lender, you know, speak to their history with this particular group or individual as to their experience and their assets that they're aware of.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question. On a second read, do you need to have, Mr. Laredo, there needs to be a first and a second for to approve the second read?
Well, yes, a second read of the ordinance, yes.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for a motion. Councilmember McAdams.
I'm happy to make that.
Please.
Hold, I move, we hold a second reading of an ordinance to amend Pacific Grove Municipal Code, Section 11.68, related to water distribution regulations to enable promissory notes associated with payment of entitlement water sales.
Do you have a second? We will have a vote, please, Ms. Candell.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio.
No.
Councilmember Coletti.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Peduri.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Aye.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you. And now moving on to item 12A, election timeline options, Ms. Candell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, staff and members of the public. At council's July 21st meeting, council directed staff to return with an election timeline options for the council's consideration in placing the sales tax increase on a future ballot. I do not have a PowerPoint tonight, but have merely outlined election dates and filing deadlines within my agenda report pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 1000. I've also provided a recap of the cost and other information. And I just wanted to remind the council that these are estimates per registered voter based on historical data averaging all jurisdictions and does not necessarily reflect the final cost. And of course, as we've seen in past elections, it depends on ballot measure arguments. You know, the printing of the full measures, text in the voter guides, the length of the measured text, the number of districts, and then I believe we even received some COVID mitigation at our last election on our last election invoice. As a reminder to council, the choice of any election to carry a tax measure other than the November 2022 election date will require the unanimous vote of council approving a declaration of fiscal emergency to justify the use of the off-cycle date as referenced in our municipal code. And just a further reminder to a decision to place a measure on any future ballot, staff and council have drafted a revised tax ballot measure that is ready for submission to the CDTFA for advanced review and approval. Staff recommendation tonight is just to receive the report and, of course, provide staff direction as appropriate, and that concludes my report. And I and city attorney and city manager are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Candell, did you say you have a new ordinance draft? Or staff has prepared a new ordinance for the second election? Is that, did I hear that right?
There was a draft that was information that was carried over from the, my apologies, through the mayor. It was information that was carried over from the last agenda report provided by the attorney, so our city attorney, and so I believe there is a draft.
Mr. Laredo, has that draft ever been presented to council?
No, I don't know that it has. I know that the draft has been prepared. It is available to go to council for review at any time.
All right. Is that an ordinance? Is that right? A proposed ordinance?
That's, yes, it would be.
Okay, well, as I recall, the last time we discussed this, there's a couple of timing issues. One of them was to see what might happen with the lawsuit against CDTFA. And so I was expecting to see this to come to us in December. But now here we are, beginning of September, trying to forecast what we should be doing perhaps for an April election, a June election, or the 2020 November election. You know, I just, I would, first off, I'm glad there's an ordinance that's been, that's kind of been drafted. Would definitely, and we spoke of this last time, would definitely like to see CDTFA get a copy, review it, see if it passes muster. You know, it's right there on their, and I know you know this, Mr. Laredo, but it's right there on their website as far as them announcing to the public and to cities that review is strongly encouraged. So I fully anticipate that we'll do that. But maybe, maybe we're, I'm not sure what we're really going to do tonight. But my recommendation would be is that we get that proposed ordinance to council, have them look it over. And if that looks like it's something we want to send off to the CDTFA, all well and good. But I don't, I don't think we're ready to take action tonight on calling an election. So maybe, maybe someone can just help me exactly what we were hoping to, go ahead, Mr. Laredo.
If I may, Mr. Coletti, through the mayor. I know council had been discussing this question several times in terms of what would the election date be? I believe the intent of this was to get the information out to the council and to the public so it's information that's before you. I don't believe that we were anticipating that council would be actually be providing direction tonight as to what election. I believe that our hope was to see how the CDTFA lawsuit goes. There is a hearing date that has been set for November 9th. That's likely then that the council would have a better awareness as to what happens at the litigation front as to what would be needed for the, for an election as an alternative and that there would be enough time to then get a draft ordinance to CDTFA for their review before then council would be asked to actually set the date. What we wanted to do is to get this information before you so you could have this and contemplate it all, all, all the different aspects of this matter.
Okay, set, basically set up the permutations.
That's correct.
So the permutations, or the elections, as I understand them, are in April, June, possible elections that we could put this on, April, June, and November. So we've got three target dates. Council will pick one of those perhaps at some point. I do appreciate the information. I think maybe at our last meeting, there was some question of whether June was actually going to be an election or not. It is. And I think I actually may have said it wasn't, so I misspoke on that one. So, okay, so the information now is that there will be three elections. Mike, you know, one thing councils should consider, or just, since these are just kind of information items at this point, you hold the election, but it takes several months before the cash starts rolling in, actually. So for instance, at the last election, 2020, November, we, the public did pass Mejorl. Through all the correspondence that I've read with CDTFA and the city, the collection wouldn't actually occur until April. So just keep that in mind, that when you think about an election date, okay, fine, but it's several months later when the money starts getting collected. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sandra, for preparing this and putting it all in one clear place. Because I know we have had a lot of conversations about it, but this lays out the facts in black and white. And it is very helpful for us to know when we need to make the decisions. And, you know, what I would like, I do have a little bit of direction I would like to provide if you all agree. And that is, okay, we have a draft revised ballot measure. I would like it to be sent to CDTFA for their review, not to submit it. But it's been said many times that they have offered to review it to make sure it is good to go before you submit it. So I'd like that to be sitting on the shelf with a bow on it, you know, and have that done. So that would be my advice. And then, because I think that in November, the November 9th, we're going to get some kind of information. I hope it's the, for one, I hope it's the information we want, and two, I hope it's conclusive. It might be information that is positive but not conclusive. And so then we're still going to be left with a decision to make. And January 7th will be right around the corner. So again, I think having the ordinance with a bow on it is, is, that would be the next step. And then, you know, without conclusive information in November, my, I would like, the money, the amount, the cost that you provided, Ms. Candell, is totally worth it to me to spend to put it on the April 5th election, the sooner one, because we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars a month. And so that's sort of where I'm leaning, but I do think that conversation can take place later, way more in depth, when we, when we know more. So, thanks.
Mayor Protempore Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually disagree with the last comment. But the, and the reason is this, it's a highly illegal question, really, in this case. In this, in this item, a motion for summary judgment is just positive motion. So on November 9th, we may in fact get a resolution to our issue, potentially. And so that's actually a very significant court appearance. I would definitely not suggest sending a draft ordinance to the CDTFA prior to knowing the outcome of that hearing. Because that's going to indicate and signal to CDTFA that we think, you know, there's a problem or that we're not going to get it through, or, and possibly even the court. So that, from a litigation strategy standpoint, that doesn't make any sense. And then, it might take a little bit of time to hear from the court on that motion as well. So like, November 9th rolls around and the judge doesn't have to decide from the bench. She can decide, take it into submission or whatever, and make a ruling two weeks, a month, a week later. So there's a little bit, there's a little bit of flexibility I think we need to have on this. And we can ask, you know, our city attorney the same questions. But in my view, the earliest possible election that I would consider even supporting for this would be the June 7th primary, which is an election that's going to be held. It's not one that we have to schedule. The April 5th is one that we have to schedule on our own. So we, that would be a special election. So the June 7th is going to happen, it's going to be a primary. And then, of course, the November, the general midterm, that's going to happen. And if we're talking about, you know, timing, the March 11th deadline on the June 7th primary is kind of like from here, six months out. Probably gives us an opportunity to see what's going to happen. And also, you know, prior to going forward with our ballot measure to have that reviewed by CDTFA in some fashion before March 11th, I'm sure that they would I would imagine they would work with us, given everything that's happened, if the lawsuit were to be a failure, then I would imagine they would be willing to work with us to try to help us come up with the right language, I would, I would hope. But I mean, I don't, I don't know. But that, just to summarize, you know, this March 9th, or I mean, November 9th hearing is important. I don't think we should do anything until we see what the results is of that. And, and secondly, the June 7th would be the earliest election I would support just because of the timing of everything. It's not that I don't like getting tax money, I just think that, you know, there might be a resolution at the end of this year in our favor. So I want to make sure that we see that actually were to occur, were to occur. And maybe there's some follow-up that the city attorney can provide as well.
Councilmember Peduri and then Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually thank the staff for providing this information. Certainly helps us determine what our next steps need to be. I actually, I also favor Mayor Protem Smith's approach. I think we should see what the outcome of the November 9th meeting is before anything else. A couple of questions. There was a mention of CDTFA review. I was wondering if anyone knows how long the review process actually takes and should we account for that, number one? And number two, if we were to determine that we're calling the June route and if we were to put in another measure for June as well, will that effectively reduce cost or is that going to increase cost of both the measures? Two questions.
If I may, through the mayor, I don't know precisely how long CDTFA takes to do the review. I do not believe it would be a prolonged period of time. I have to say that from a litigation strategy, Uh, I, I have to say that from a litigation strategy uh, approach, I agree with Mayor Protemp. Smith's comment that the fact of submitting the ordinance to CDTFA is a, uh. Could influence litigation and it could be a factor that actually is uh, uh, turned over to the judge. One last point, I do want to remind that any off-cycle election. Does need a uh, declaration of urgency and a unanimous vote of your council. So the only uh, election date that does not require the unanimous vote is November of twenty twenty-two. The other dates do require that urgency uh, uh, declaration.
And thank you, city attorney. Uh, as to the second question, uh. If you add a measure for the, say, primary or general, another measure along with the tax, uh. Will that reduce the cost or will the cost remain the same?
Um, through the mayor, I, I can take that, Councilmember Peduri. Um, if you add it, it, again, it depends, and we always just give the estimates here, the estimates that are provided by the. Uh, Elections Department, and that's the six to eight dollars, um, if it were on a, uh, for example, the June. Um. Uh, primary meet, primary election, the standalone is, is the higher cost. Um, because that is a special election that we would be setting. Um, so when you, when you add it to other dates or general elections or primary, it does lower the cost.
So if we, so just to clarify, confirm that. If there were two measures in, in, in June that we were to propose. Then the estimated cost for registered voter would decrease. We don't know what that decrease is, but it will decrease, correct?
Um, if we added two men, two, if we added two measures, sir?
Yes.
Um, I believe the estimate is still remains the same, obviously, it could lower it, uh, depending on, on all the other factors that I. That I talked about, and that's uh, how many other districts are coming and bringing new measures of their own, what we're actually printing in the ballot, so it really does vary. I don't think that that would lower our costs. We're given an estimate of six to eight dollars per registered voter. No matter how many measures we put on our ballot, on the ballot.
Okay, uh, I think I got the answer, but uh, thank you.
Councilmember McAdams, and then Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I hope that the council's aware that we've already paid for both a special election and a. Regular election, uh, cause we've lost about four hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue. Um, since the clock started ticking for me in April. Um, so I don't care what the cost is, uh, whether it's a special election or a regular election. Um, and for me, the sooner the better. Um, you know, none of us have a, a crystal ball. And I've been hoping for a while with regards to the uh. The, the case, and so really, November, you know. They could not do anything, and then I don't want to sit on my hands for another six months. Um. As far as the uh, um, information uh, with regards to. On the ordinance, there's a template on the CDTFA's website. Uh, and, and all you have to do really is just copy it and then plug in the city's. Uh, the municipality's uh, name, so uh, that work is done for us. Um, you have to know that the CDTFA, or that um. That they're expecting us to be preparing for an election. We, we've been talking about that in open session, so that's. For me, is really not a strategy or a secret. Um, if we're not successful, we're going to have an election. So as far as that, you know, gumming up the case, I, I think that. Um, that they're a lot smarter than that, and they probably know that we're, we're exploring that option as well, so. Um, for me, every month is eighty to a hundred thousand dollars of lost tax revenue. And that's what I'm focused on, um, is, is getting that money, so. And, you know, whether it's a special or a primary, you know, typically, uh. It's not a presidential election, there's gonna be a low turnout anyways. However, all the ballots will be mailed, so, you know, I think that's good, and, and I don't think that it matters, I mean, it's. It is just a couple of months, but I would hope that we're prepared, you know. January one of twenty twenty-two to be ready. Um, to file, and either way, we would have to have that ready, whether it's January seventh, um, or March eleventh. That's two months, it's gonna fly by. So the more due diligence that we can do. Do, the better prepared that we can be. You know, the more success we're gonna have with regards to the election. But I'm not holding my breath for November ninth or, you know, whenever the summary judgment is, and. You know, Mayor Protempor is right, the judge could be like, okay, great, thanks, everybody. I'll give you my judgment in ninety days, six months. But it's the holidays, we're busy, you know, I mean, we just, we don't know, so. I'm um, a hundred percent anticipating that this is gonna go uh, to the ballot, so, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, um, Mayor, uh, Mayor, uh, the question, uh, is Tori on, uh. On, on, I have a question for Tori. She here?
Uh, yeah, this is, this is Tori.
Yeah, hi, Tori, uh. Do you know approximately how much uh, is loss uh, in sales tax because of uh. Is what's happened? I have a couple of things, but I was just curious if you knew approximately, uh, the ballpark figure.
Councilmember Emilio through the ma- mayor, um, we looked at it in conjunction, um, with something that repaired. Prepared for the city attorney's office, and it is about eighty-seven thousand dollars a month.
Okay, thank you. Um. The, the re- the reality is, my comment is, uh. But it's, it's lost revenue, we're, we're not gonna recoup it, you know. And um, but I do believe that we need to be prudent and um. Uh, I would suggest by the, considering all the time that's being taken. Uh, and it says to give direction to staff, I would look at the consolidated election. Uh, and uh, actually, Sandra, the question is, consolidated election could be in June, is that correct, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the consolidate, consolidated price refers to both the June primary as well as the November general.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I'm, I'm thinking of the uh, consolidated election as a direction. Uh, till we know where all the other uh, cards fall. That's my comment.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, for a, a second chance to talk. I, I, after listening, I do believe that sending the. Uh, document to CDTFA in advance to review before November ninth is not a great idea, so. Um, well, I, I do have a question for the city attorney on when, when will you recommend that we send it? What's the turnaround time? Would it be possible to send it after November ninth and still file by January seventh?
I believe that as long as it's sent by mid-November. That we have, would have the opportunity to, to ha- get the feedback from CDTFA. I don't believe that it's going to take them that long to review it.
And what, um. I, I would imagine you're very close to this document. Do you believe their review is going to be needed for it to be correct? Or do you feel it's correct even, I mean, I know we'll have them review it as an abundance of caution. Um, but do you feel it is correct this time?
I'm, I'm comfortable that it's correct. Uh, we did start with the CDTFA document. Uh, uh, it was reviewed by multiple people in my office, and uh, I. Did not want to present you with something that you would not be able to rely upon.
Okay, okay, so I just, I, I think, uh, I know I said I wanted to have direction to send it off to CDTFA, but I, I changed my mind on that. I think we should hold off. Um, I, I know it's out here in open session, they might be watching, listening, be fully aware, but it still sends a very. Clear signal to actually mail it to them. So, um, let's see what happens on November ninth and have further discussion. Um, after that, thanks.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things. And um, I'm glad we're having this discussion, by the way. The, uh, you know, as far as a good template for what the ordinance should be, we already have one. We did it in two thousand and eight. It's Measure U. That's where we implemented a one percent city sales tax. I've read that, it's, you know, it's com- it's completely consistent with the requirements that CDTFA outlines in their draft ordinance that they put on. Uh, online. At any rate, so I know Ms. Laredo has all the resources he needs. Uh, n- n- none, none less important than Measure U itself from two thousand and eight. So, I, uh, I would agree, I don't think we should broadcast our position quite so blatantly. And that we probably should not send our proposed ordinance to CDTFA prior to the uh, summary judgment hearing. So I think that's a good idea. I agree with that. I also kind of tend to agree that I think a, a June election, uh, it makes sense. And uh, one, it's, it is a consolidated election, uh, we will already be paying for. Uh, some of that, our prorated share of, of the election. And by the way, th- this is really important when you look at these election costs, and by the way, I agree with Councilmember McAdams. You know, we're losing eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars a month, depending on the month. So cost really isn't the key, uh, or the big driver here, but when you do have a consolidated election. Placing an additional ballot measure, and this kind of answers Councilmember Pedori's question. Raises the baseline cost. You've already got a baseline for actually holding the election. Uh, as, and as a city, we pay a prorated amount. You're gonna raise it ten to fifteen thousand dollars. I asked for this analysis a long time ago on Measure P. I won't bore you with the details. But often you hear what the election cost will be, well, that's the total election. So adding a measure uh, is actually not that much. So June makes a lot of sense in that regard, because you'll already be having a, an election that you'll be paying for, and adding an additional ballot measure. Uh, is not a big uh, addition. In fact, it's almost, it's trivial really, compared to the mu- amount we're talking. But you know, the one thing that we should be can, uh, should uh, uh, consider is that if we do have a cannabis measure. Cannabis tax measure that the council uh, might be considering, they shouldn't be on the same ballot. So, little strategy here perhaps, uh, forward thinking. If we do this in June, which is a good call, I think. Then if we do a cannabis tax measure, that would probably want to happen in November. Wouldn't have to be an urgency ordinance, or, uh, or emerg- a state of, uh, declare a state of emergency to make that, et cetera, et cetera, so. Um, I think this is all heading in the right direction, and again, I thank everyone for the discussion.
I'll just uh, try to summarize uh, council's position. What I heard. I is that uh, we're gonna hold off on discussing uh, potential ballot measure. Until after the November ninth hearing, which would be council meeting, would be the second council meeting. In November on the seventeenth. And hopefully have enough information at that time to make a decision, all right? Or we don't even have to have a ballot, cause the judge will decide in our favor, so. Anyone here, anything different? Not seeing any hands. Mr. Laredo, Mr. Harvey. Does that match what you heard as well?
Precisely what I heard.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this was a, uh, a report out in staff direction, so there's no motion on this. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. And I, I want, I know, uh, Councilmember Emilio.
I'm sorry, I just have to emphasize, this is the end of the regular agenda. We are going to go back into closed session.
Good, good reminder. Thank, thank you very much. Yes, we're gonna go back into a recessed, uh, special session. Um, uh, Ms. Candell, did you wanna make an announcement on that?
I did. I wanted to know if you wanted to adjourn this meeting and then announce the closed session and, and take public comment uh, before we. Um, close this meeting and, and then we don't have to do it in, in the next, uh, in the closed meeting.
I'm glad you brought that up. Definitely, I want to adjourn this meeting. But since we've already taken public comment and announced the agenda for the special meeting at five o'clock. We, we don't need to do that, so after we adjourn the regular meeting, if council members. Um, would please go ahead, and the city attorney, please go ahead and log in to the uh, special meeting. Uh, link that uh, the clerk sent us already. Councilmember Coletti?
Does the public know how to log in perhaps to make any comment on the closed session item, or is that? That's already taking place, okay?
We did that at five o'clock.
Very good, thank you.
This is just a, a recessed meeting, so we don't go back and start it over, okay? Um.
Are we taking a little break?
Ten-minute break.
Okay.
Ten-minute break, okay? And so thank, thank everyone, public, staff, council members, for being here tonight, participating. Meeting adjourned, have a.